All right, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is in session. First on the agenda is old new business approval of minutes from February 13th, 2020.
I think we'll hold off on that.
Hold off because all the members aren't here, fine.
You want to vote on that?
Do we have to?
No, I don't think so. I think we'll just continue.
Being after seven, the first hearing is, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Robert W. and Diane Greeno, 189 Rockland Street, Abington, for lot width variance of 4.64 feet under 17521 on Lot 1, 189 Rockland Street, property located on Assessor's Map 22, Lot 47 in the R20 zone.
Come on up.
Evening, members. Kyle Garvey representing Robert and Diane Greeno of 189 Rockland Street. It's a piece of property that was purchased by the Greenos in October of 1996. That is an old farmhouse on it that was built according to records in 1824. Proposal calls for a two-lot subdivision of the property. The property lies in the R20 zone, requiring 20,000 square feet of land and 100-foot of frontage. The lots are also required to have a lot width of 100 feet at the 35-foot setback line. The existing structure is closer than the lot width requirement of 4.36 feet, I believe it was. And the sideline setbacks presently on the, our, the sideline setback in this particular zone is 15 feet. The present house is 36.3 feet from the naughtily boundary line and 26.26 feet from the division line. This lot, the present deed description calls for the property to have 210.39 feet of frontage. Presently, there is only 206 feet due to a taking, highway taking for the widening of Rockland Street that reduced the lot area by 1,680 square feet, which also relocated technically the front setback distance. So based on that, the applicant is requesting a variance for that lot width for Lot Number One. Lot Number Two meets all zoning requirements, and this request would not be substantially detriment to the public or would deviate from zoning by law.
Okay, you can just show us that picture of, what is the 100-foot in the very front there on the first house? Or it shows 100 feet across.
On Lot.
On Lot One.
Lot One.
What is this? Does this mean the frontage right there?
Yeah, L is, it's on a curve, yeah, so the rate.
Okay, so you have 100 feet there.
Yeah.
But really, you only have what here?
95.36.
But there is 100 feet here?
Yes.
And what do we have here for a frontage here?
106 point something.
106.99.
So you don't have the frontage? I mean, it says right there you do have the frontage.
We do have the frontage, we don't.
With frontage, you have the setback line at the 35.
At the step back line, okay.
Which is this?
Which is back down here?
Which is this line here, but the house is already basically in front of that, you know?
Yeah, so it just confused me that it's showing 100 feet. So in other words, the, it kind of pies in, right? So this is one lot right now.
Correct.
By doing what you're doing, you're creating your own hardship by splitting the lot like that, technically.
Well, I think, you know, the shape of the property, the taking that was done by the widening kind of did it, and basically when they bought it, the requirement, the Abington zoning by law did not have a lot width at that time.
We do now, though.
Yeah.
It's in the book. When I look at this, I don't see, they went, when did they do the widening of Rockland Street? Takeaway, when did they do that?
There was a couple takings, one in 1940, one in 1970.
But the house was where it is now, right?
How old is the existing house?
It was built.
1824.
1824. So, yes, well, I think where you're going, Mr. Chairman, is, there's, in essence, currently one lot with just about 200 feet, almost 200 feet of frontage.
Right.
And so you're saying that dividing it is creating a hardship, correct?
Because.
Because he doesn't have the frontage.
Right.
Well, the actual frontage is 206.99 feet.
Okay.
But, what did you say there?
But because of where the house is.
Step back line.
Got it. Oh, really? Was it compliant when, when the original plot was developed? I'm sorry? You can see that he's lost not only some length of the lot, but the house was, in essence, set further back at the same time, and it's, it's not quite enough, just, you know, eyeballing this pie shape here with that, it's pretty close. But I'm curious if, you know, it's an odd, it's an interesting thing, because in one way he has enough frontage, but I don't think it's, you're not going to sit there, they're not creating a pork chop lot, which is what we generally.
No. But it's a conforming lot into a non-conforming lot.
Right. True.
No, no, and I agree. I mean, we had a case of similar circumstances a few weeks ago where we were presented with the same issue, where it was a conforming lot that they wanted to subdivide into two non-conforming lots. I do see a distinction in the fact that part of the nonconformity was caused by in eminent domain taking, and there is, you know, case law that basically says, you know, Adams versus Brawley, 46 Mass, appellate court one, hardship caused by eminent domain did not preclude award of a variance. I mean, we do have some leeway in the fact that.
Doesn't automatically give you.
No, nothing's automatic. That's why they're here.
Well, the lot I made non-conforming was the one with the house on it, where the house is not at the building setback line. So whether it has the width at that building setback line or not doesn't make any difference because the house is in front of it by 10 feet.
In my mind, this isn't the creation of a pork chop lot. You know, it's, it's a total of four feet at the setback, and my assumption would be sort of that, I mean, because if all you're, if all you're asking for is the lot variance, my assumption is anything that's constructed in Lot Two is going to be within the setbacks.
Yeah, Lot Two totally conforms to this number, correct.
But you're getting right back to that, you know, it's a conforming lot making it a non-conforming lot, and also they're creating their own variance by splitting the lot.
Well, I mean, they used to take the position that the hardship was created by the taking because otherwise they could have subdivided at that point they bought them, or at the point the lot was created, because it had the 212 feet or something like that.
Well, also, it says here that this was before zoning, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, at that point, the lot.
So you just got to be careful with it because you don't want to be.
Yeah, no, no. No, I get it.
Well, the present deed calls for 210.39 feet of frontage, so, and when Robert got his plot plan when he bought it, that's what it, that's what it showed, and at that time he only needed 100-foot of frontage. Actually, you didn't even have a lot with setback at that time.
That's what it looked like before. Marshall, Abington, add.
If they had, as I say, 35-foot setback line, you have to have 102, both lots.
Yeah, well, I would have, I would have done it separately because Lot Two would have kicked out a lot further than it is now. It was like a 16th, I think, it's around 12-foot taking along that, what was the deed that said?
Do you have that in writing that the land was taken?
I have all of, I have everything from the original.
That there was a taking?
Yeah. Oh, no, I don't have that from the taking.
Yeah, well, actually, it does, it says, it says in the.
Just trying to be.
The other thing we could do is take it over to Amy.
Yeah, that's a good point, because she likes to see the paperwork, everything to prove the fact that before you turn another lot into something, I'll tell a lawyer, so.
And this, the county taking there, which shows that there was 1,680 square feet, that's, and the orange is the taking.
They took 11, roughly 11.61 feet off the front of this lot because he was 37 feet back. It shows here plus or minus is what they're on the end of the land survey. And if you move forward 11 feet from the current setback, setback line, would you have the 100 feet?
Hard to tell, but it looks pretty close. I mean, it's pretty close, yeah.
If you go by this, I mean, if that taking now includes it, I see that as a hardship. But nobody's done any calculations because this says plus or minus 37 feet back. Now he's 25.39, so there was a taking from 11.61 feet. If you took this 35-foot, 20-yard setback and moved it forward 11.61 feet, would you have the 100 feet that they needed? If so, they've taken it away from him after, if it's after he's registered.
Was it before or after?
It was before he purchased it.
Before.
But, yeah, I mean, the deed that he, the drawing he has is.
My drawing is the original drawing. My drawing isn't this. My drawing shows my property line 353 feet long.
Oh, really?
Yes, and this drawing has me, by your taking or whoever took it, at 341 feet. This is what I was judging by, and this is what I handed to him, and then all of a sudden it was like, oh, look what they did to you. And I said, when they do that, it goes before you bought it, but we didn't have no, we didn't know.
It's hard to tell from here, what do we look?
You'd have to take all the information and have to send it to council.
Okay. All right.
I mean, to, to go back, start at a point at the road at zero and go back to a width against the hall property, going four feet there and trying to do a land swap and getting banks involved is, does not really help the lot width there. I mean, it's already, he's already 36.3 feet away, you know, it's, so he's going to be 40 feet away, I mean, who cares?
Well, I think we would like council to look at this one.
Yeah.
But I'm just, just talking to you guys, is that something that you?
I think I feel comfortable with that, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, so can we, can we open up to the floor? Anyone having a say on this? Any questions or anything? No? Okay, closing to the floor. We would like to see the, have the lawyer look at this first, the town lawyer.
But I also think that the lot width by law was, was adopted after he bought it, too, also. Other words, before you only had frontage and area requirements in the town of Abington, then you went to lot width, I believe in 2006. So that is when, when it became a violation, not prior to that, too.
All right. Are you agreement with us?
If that is the case, may we have, or can you supply so we can get two council copies of that original?
Because we want to get this right, so we want to make sure that everything is dotted and.
The original what, document?
Yeah, the one that showed the taking and all that kind of stuff.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, it's, yeah, it's recorded at the registry.
I guess what we're asking is, will you agree to a continuing?
Right, do you agree to a continuing?
That month's hearing.
Yes. All right, that will be for next month. And we're going to have.
Yeah, we need to, yeah.
We're going to, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I think they're going to have to sign.
You're Pepper's dad, right?
I'm sorry?
You're Pepper's dad, right?
Yes.
All right, so are we going to make a motion here?
Sure, I'll make a motion to.
Continue?
Yep, I'll make a motion to continue the petition of Robert and Diane Greeno, 189 Rockland Street, Abington, for a lot with variance under 41.64 under 17521 on Lot 1, 189 Rockland Street. I'll second.
All favor?
All right.
So we'll get you on agenda for next month?
You'll be first. All right. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. So are there any copies of anything you can give us for the, for the town lawyer?
Anything that's, anything to support your case.
Well, you can, she's taking Nancy's place.
I like support.
Well, I don't know, yeah, okay, I don't know if there's any other information.
Yes. Do we have paperwork for continuing?
No, I'm going to go grab it.
Okay, you're going to have to sign something for the continuing. They'll have to sign some. Yes, they agreed.
They got to sign that, right?
Yeah, let some sign first before we continue. That's why I wish Amy was here at all the meetings.
It being after 7:05, Abington, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Damian Riley, 469 Hancock Street, Abington, for a special permit under 17526C to construct a three-car garage over 875 square feet, and a special permit under 17532I to legalize existing in-law apartment at 469 Hancock Street, property located on Assessor's Map 44, Lot 42 in the R30 zone.
How are you doing?
Good, how are you doing, guys? Good. So, my name is Damian Riley. I obtained 469 Hancock Street in June 3rd of 2019. When I purchased the property, there was a smaller attached unit at the front, which was occupied by some tenants, which moved out upon my purchase. In 2011, Assessor's Office did a site visit, interior and exterior viewed the property, and the property was assessed from that point on as a two-family dwelling with greenhouse So I'm looking for relief to keep this existing structure as an in-law apartment. I have some pictures of the interior showing it is in, has been much repaired.
So is it a two-family or not a two-family?
I don't believe it's a legal two-family.
It does say here though, two-family.
Yeah, the assessors don't necessarily say it's legal or not, just.
The assessor assesses what he thinks, what she thinks they see.
Okay.
And that's what they thought was.
So was there?
It may have been assessed excessively because it's not, it had, potentially, I don't know.
So that, I'm sorry.
It was never, never had a, for a, an in-law. The structure exists, but he's now just wants to have a special permit for the in-law.
So when was, do you know when this was built? I mean.
Yes, the original property was built in 1970. This addition was added in 1973. There is several permits on file for the property, overall property, and then some permitting showing the kitchen sink, toilet, bathroom, stuff like that added. From the information I got from the previous tenants is their father lived in it for years as an, like an in-law apartment.
How many square feet is the in-law?
576 square feet, 24 by 24.
It's as big as a house, is it? Is there any other pictures of the house?
Yeah, I have regarding the.
So is there not a special permit?
I have before and after on the garage.
Is this the in-law?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I was just trying to get, I was trying to get my head around the.
Yeah, right. Okay, there we go, now we can see it.
This is the before, so.
Oh, there we go.
Oh, that's a little better.
Yeah, that's much better.
A copy of the facts.
There we go.
576.
What's the total on the house?
1536 or something like that.
You said you're going to take down this?
Yeah, that is the rear, where the, the greenhouse is attached to the house.
Really? Oh, I know this house, okay, I know. I know this house very well, I know it.
Okay.
I'm doing a nice job of cleaning it up.
There's some other pictures of when I purchased it.
Okay, I do know this house, I knows afterwards, because I've noticed the, the well job, the great job you're doing on it.
Thank you.
Yeah, greenhouse is a bit of a fixer-upper.
Yeah, I remember the gentleman who owned that.
Chapin, I believe.
Yeah, I just don't, I didn't recall the, the three-car garage, I just.
So.
There's no three-car garage.
There's no.
What is, what is that, then?
That's the greenhouse.
Okay.
That is the greenhouse, chicken coop, storage sheds, and store display area.
Okay.
So in regards to this picture, where are you proposing the garage?
Is that the rear of the property?
That's right, yeah.
Okay. Oh, so around to the back, so you really wouldn't even see it from the front.
Yeah.
Okay. Where the chicken coops are now?
Yes.
Chicken coop is greenhouse.
So the greenhouse, so all this is coming down?
Yes.
Want to see this?
And you're proposing?
So I have an outline of where it is on the lot.
Okay. So we have, what, 850, 875? 875, so this is 25%.
It's over 75, it is. So this is a non-conforming lot, it's 25,000 and change in a 30,000 square foot. The allowable is 875.
Mm-hmm.
I'm looking for 1120, otherwise I would have to put up an accessory building for storage.
And then, did I see on the design that you're, is that going to be living space above it, or is that just additional storage?
It's just additional storage space.
So in-law, the regular house, and what you want to build, which is a three-car garage.
I have to do something with the disrepair at the rear. It's attached to the, physically attached to the house.
What do we say about three-car garages? Is there something?
875.
The max, yeah.
Special permit from you guys.
Okay, all right.
He wants 1100.
1120 is.
That's a pretty big garage. All right. Mark, for the in-law, do you need to inspect that before they get occupied, or?
Yeah, I would probably go and take a look, but it does exist.
Well, it looks like it's, it's plenty of land to put it on, so it doesn't really, it doesn't really do anything to the neighborhood.
Yeah, it's kind of interesting when I was looking at, excuse me, the front elevation, it's kind of has a tiered look to it, which actually in some ways kind of fits versus.
The neighborhood.
I think the use of the three-car garage would be.
Yeah, that's the actual, that's what you want, right?
Right, so one for the tenant, one for, you know, Damian's everyday car, and one for his work vehicle, that way they're not.
Who do you anticipate the tenant being?
My daughter.
Okay.
My daughter's 22, she just finished college.
Okay.
Okay, you know, it does, it has to be relative.
Yeah, I understand, I have form filled out for when.
Okay.
I believe in January, there's a.
Right, but we got to get back to that two-family thing. It's not, it's not a two-family. Okay, that's done and over, not a two-family, all right. Because we don't want to be, have something built and then later on they'll say, yeah, well, it's two-family.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So that should really be changed. All right, you guys all set? I'm going to go to the floor if you're all set. Anybody for this petition? If they want to say any words? No? Okay, bring it back to the board. All right.
So, well, I just.
No barrier in the system.
Okay, yeah, I didn't get that sheet. You have it? Okay.
They're slacking this one.
It's all right.
Generally, I'm not a huge fan of three-car garages because of the way they look, but this has been shielded from the street. I do kind of like the look of the front elevation, so I'm not, I'm not off-put by the oversized garage.
I believe with this process, I would be giving up my right for the mixed use on the property.
Okay.
Most likely.
There is a mixed use on the property?
Abington Gardens.
There is.
Okay. Mixed use, okay.
Store display area, yeah.
Right, because that's right, because I remember the gentleman who used to, who plants there. So you're giving that, okay, thank you for bringing that up.
No, I mean, I agree that ordinarily a garage this size would give me pause, especially in sort of the location it is and how tight that the houses are in that neighborhood, just in terms of, you know, the proximity, but given the amount of setback you have and what you're replacing, I think it works. I don't think it's more definite at all to them.
The existing greenhouse, store display area, chicken coop are 2,050 square feet.
So it's larger than what he.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
Make a motion. Marshall, do you want to?
Did this one to the floor?
Yes.
Yes, it did, I closed it for.
Do you want this condition, you're getting in there with the two-family, I mean, the in-law?
That was all I did with that.
Okay.
Is there anything else you want to add?
You just added the condition, so you run with it.
Okay. Is there anything else you guys want to add to it at all?
He's just adding the condition in regards to the inspection, right?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition of Damian Riley, 469 Hancock Street, Abington, for a special permit under.
I'll make a motion to approve the petition of Damian Riley, four sixty-nine Hancock Street, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five twenty-six C, to construct a three-car garage over eight hundred and seventy-five square feet, and a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-two I, to legalize existing in-law apartment at four sixty-nine Hancock Street. Subject to the condition of the building, inspector will inspect the in-law apartment prior to occupancy. The property is located on Assessor's Map forty-four, lot forty-two, in the R thirty zone. And per the plans that were submitted with the application.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Liz has a sheet for you folks.
Who do I need to sign?
Isn't there something that just, it's a thirty-day waiting period they have, they have on these?
Only if we, I thought we, I don't think.
We wait late that, these, is that?
I don't think we have that. I think that's only if, if we deny, right?
No, I thought there was a thirty-day wait for right of appeal for somebody to come out of the woodwork.
Um, do you wanna?
No, I mean, I thought it was normal that Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy, maybe you can ask Nancy. If there's any other paperwork, we'll get it to you.
Twenty-one days.
Okay. Yep, without Nancy, we're.
Everybody.
Yeah, it's, we rely on Nancy a lot, that's for sure. Nope, no.
You're doing a good job, Liz.
Yes, you are. You're doing great. We get, we're just talking to ourselves. Next.
It being after seven ten P M, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of E M K Trust, Robert P Matthews, trustee, P O Box two-two-five-seven, Abington, for a special permit under one seventy-five thirty-five, and waiver of environmental impact statement to allow a single-family home construction, living floodplain, own protections overlay district at sixteen Murphy Street. Property located on Assessor's Map fifty-one, lot thirty-nine forty-four-one, in the R thirty zone.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Sean Riley. Thank you. Five hundred Washington Street in Abington, representing the Matthews, Rob and Lisa Matthews, who are, Rob is the trustee of the family trust, the E M K Trust. Cal Garvey is also here with us. We are here today for a special permit to build a single-family house in the floodplain overlay district, which I know you're very familiar with the district. It encompasses about half of the property in Abington. The lot itself is conforming. It's a residential lot. It has the required area, required frontage and all. The proposed house meets all the setbacks, so the only relief that's required is the special permit. We ask for a waiver of the environmental impact statement. The plan that's been submitted shows you the proposed topography. As it sits right now, it's a vacant lot, and the water, rainwater, would flow in a, what's that, North Arrow? It would flow basically from across Chamberlain Street, which is a non-existent street, it's a paper street. It flows in this direction up the plan, towards the Berry's house. That will now be reduced because by adjusting the topography, whereas all the water that's landing on Chamberlain Street and this lot flows down that way, that lot, our lot will be crowned, so about approximately half of the land will, the water will flow back towards Chamberlain, and the half, the portion that goes on the far side yard, or the left side yard, we call it, will now be directed out back. The row of trees there, the arborvitae's, or the evergreens, I should say, um, do you need to see that?
Yeah, that'd be good, sorry.
Same, it's the same plane you have in front of you, um, but it's in color.
So basically, you're gonna, the water's gonna be graded up? Is that what you're trying to say?
The water, instead of, the lot right now, if you're looking at the lot.
Yeah.
It grades right to left.
Okay.
Okay, now it's going to be a crowned lot, so the half of the lot will go to the right, half of the lot will go left, so reducing the amount of water that goes towards the Berry's property. But we're also channeling it away from the Berry's, we'll effectively try to reduce the water that goes towards the Berry's property, because that row of evergreens you see is actually going to be on a berm, a raised berm that would collect, it would act as a privacy screen, and it would also help with the, uh, the direction of water. I also wanted to submit to you a copy of the negative determination of applicability from the Conservation Commission. They've already reviewed the same plan. Um, there is no wetlands, fillings.
Right, cause there are wetlands right behind, correct?
There are, I think, in the distance, but not in our building area here.
Right. Is that shed, is that shed gonna be, um, far enough away from the wetlands?
The shed is actually not our shed. That's an existing neighbor's shed.
Oh.
Yeah, the, um, there, I should, I wanna clarify something. With the negative determination, there is a small pocket of wetlands out in the backyard, but it's, it's not large enough to be under the jurisdiction of the wetlands protection. It's not a wetlands issue.
No swales or anything like that? Nothing?
Excuse me?
No swales or?
Well, this, I mean, a swale.
So this is?
Be directing water this way. You see, look, see the arrows that go?
Yeah, I do, yeah.
So that's showing the, the front yard would go to the street, the side yard would go backwards, the side yard would go back.
How is this someone else's? What do you mean?
It's just been there. It's been, it's in the woods there.
Oh, it's just in the woods, really? Oh, okay, alright, I gotcha. Yep, I gotcha, yep.
So, Sean, this is basically a detail of.
Correct.
That berm, so that's gonna run whatever that is, the eighty feet, whatever.
Right.
Seventy, eighty feet.
No basement in this house coming, that's gonna be built?
Mr. LaPointe is gonna be building the house. I don't know if there's a proposed basement, it'd be a basement.
There's gonna be a basement, yeah?
Yeah, they just have to build it above the water.
Yeah, they're not going down, the whole neighborhood, they don't go down deep.
Anytime.
They just scratch the surface and then, yeah.
Cause that can, that can cause problems for.
Right.
Water direction, if you will.
Any new construction has to have, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Building Inspector, the foundation has to be two feet above the water table, and then obviously you pitch the grade away from the house. That's all incorporated in Mr. Garvey's plan. There is no flooding that's created on this property. We're actually gonna reduce the amount of water flowing off the property, so it kinda lines up with all of the checklist for the granting of a special permit, um, to allow the single-family house to be built. This is essentially a very similar proposal to the lot to its right next door that was previously approved, um, by the board, and the house has already been constructed.
So what about the draining onto the wetlands? Is that, isn't that a bylaw? No draining onto the wetlands?
You can't make it worse.
Can't make it worse.
You can't make it worse. You have to manage your water and/or reduce it on your property, and you have, you can't allow.
Well, right, right now, the flow's going this way, and they're gonna make it go this way, correct?
They're making it go more towards the back.
Into the wetlands.
It'll go. Yeah, it's.
Which is on, what's that?
Our lot.
Okay.
And if you see, approximately half the property is gonna remain untouched, though, in the back half of it there.
And that's, is that enough, um, permeable area to not affect?
Where, yeah.
Along this side of the lot.
Right, who's this, Dave and Ian?
Yeah, that's all woodland out there. There's, there's nothing built on Chamberlain, see Chamberlain Street?
Well, I'm talking.
Talking about Dave and Ian, the very back.
Yeah, it's, I mean, the lot itself is what?
Are those undeveloped?
Two hundred and eighty feet long.
Are those undeveloped properties behind, or are they developed?
The ones on Crossley Street are developed houses.
What about down here, I mean, is this all developed too?
No.
Okay.
Uh, Crossley Street has houses up, up right on Crossley Street. There's nothing out here that's resolved.
Yeah, I just wondered what's in this area here. Alright, okay.
And what's the, um, so the, just for, what's the approximate square footage of the, of the house, the structure? Like the? Uh, I didn't mean for you to do math.
No, but it's just good to know what the overall is.
They want to know the approximate footprint of the house.
Yeah.
Right, cause you're not showing it yet.
I mean, cause that's really the water you're trying to manage.
Well, I can tell you, it's approximately.
Go ahead, you can do it.
Well, you got your setbacks and you're showing.
Right.
Thirty-five and one, thirty-six, forty times, uh. One ten minus sixty-five would leave you with forty-five. Like, the house would be an maximum of like forty-five feet wide, maximum. It's gonna be a little.
I think it's forty-two feet wide. Fifty or sixty, so.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Forty-five by thirty, something like that, so.
It's, if you, if you see on the, if you see on the plan to the house number twenty-two to the right of it? Three?
Pretty much the same. Oh, yeah, it does look the same by the, the scale.
It's actually two foot smaller.
It's, it's designed so as not to do a lot of excavating. So it's not a lot of non-permeable surface that's gonna, in my, in my distress. That's how it's designed.
No, I mean, if you can see by the amount of green.
That's exactly how it's designed. But it's a little sensitive area, so that's why I'm asking these questions.
Right, the front, the front yard flows this way. The front and the driveway are all going out to the street. Be picked up into catch basins out front, um, so it's reducing runoff to.
Okay. And again, it's no developments, uh, behind the property. There's no houses there. It's just land.
Right. This is essentially the last lot on the left side of Murphy Street.
Alright, anything else, guys?
I'm good.
Alright, now I'm gonna open up to the floor. Anybody here for this project? Okay, one at a time, and if you could, um, tell us your name and, um, your address, okay?
Walter Berry. I live at seven Crossley.
Number seven?
Number seven.
Okay.
I live in the town, I lived here, this ad, for fifty years. I hasn't had any water problems for thirty-five years. Until Caraffas showed up with Century Estates.
Where is that, sir?
Background, yep. Thank you.
He's here.
You want one over there?
Yeah, please, it's good.
Is there an extra one? Thank you.
Number seven.
Uh-huh.
And obviously, the house that they wanna put is sixteen.
Yep.
What's outlined in pink is their, their property they own. The dotted line in there, number twenty, that's the house they recently built a year ago.
Okay.
That was done by Colonel Point. I wanna give you a little history on this thing, so if you want to keep going, just deal with me as we go through this thing.
No problem, go right ahead.
Yeah. Now, Century Estates. Showed up about fifteen years ago, Century Estates, Caraffas developed. He came in and, obviously, you know, probably thirty-eight houses. Now, basically, he needed, Murphy Street at that time was this first, uh, fiction number two here, a little breaking on the fiction. Now, this is looking from Crossley, looking up the development. Okay?
Okay.
Not, not, don't, don't confuse it with this one yet.
Okay.
Just to give you an idea, now, their proposed house is gonna be on the, on the far left. This, this going at sixteen, okay? Now, just to show you, looking at this drawing, or this picture rather, on the left-hand side, see a slight little depression there? Looks like it's dug out a little bit? Then, I used to have a stream running all the way back in the woods, all the way down to Crossley Street, and went into that catch basin right there on Crossley Street.
Okay.
It drained all the water from there. In thirty-five years, I never had a water problem in my backyard. It was tonny, okay? So here is Caraffas, he was big enough to make, put this Murphy Street in. He left that channel there, at the time being, to drain water out of the woods. Now, if you step back, now you can walk, you walk up the street to Murphy, and I'm looking back, this shot's looking back down Crossley Street. You see that, that ditch is still there.
Where in the, uh, where on Murphy Street is this picture, sir?
Is that the number two?
The blurry one, number three.
Number three. That's Murphy Street, okay?
From where?
From approximately, uh, up, with this Chamberlain Street is, approximately.
So where the paper street is.
Well, the paper street is, right. Looking back down towards Crossley Street.
Okay.
You see that, that ditch is there? That's still, when it rains, the water still ran down, it drained everything fine.
Give that a little over your shoulder.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Alright, now going over to number four. Here we have, again, it's the same picture.
Okay.
Alright.
See the drainage from five, yes.
Right? It worked fine. Alright, now we go to number five.
There's that drainage.
Right, that little pipe there is the one that goes to the catch basin we saw in picture number two. So all the water went down, and it drained fine.
How big is that pipe?
Oh, that one there?
Is that a six, a twelve?
No, that, that was the original, was put in the fifties, so, uh, maybe eight, six, or eight?
Okay.
So I can say, Murphy Street, at the time when it was constructed, with that stream, with that ditch, drained all the water fine, no problem.
What's this?
Wait a minute, hold on.
Getting ahead of you?
Yeah, a little bit ahead. Now, on, on six, once Caraffas made, he, he made this, you know, fill the street back, fill the hole, and this was his proposed Murphy Street.
Really?
Right. We had it, obviously, at that particular time, horrendous rainfall, so all the water from those woods, that's all, what you're looking up in the back right there, that's, that's all Century Estates. I don't know, probably six or eight houses are up, are up there today. But back then, all that water came flowing down to Crossley Street.
When was this picture taken?
This one here was back in probably two thousand and seven or eight.
So the flooded picture is, is.
Is this now where, where Murphy, Murphy Street is?
Yeah, Murphy Street, right now, this here, just go here, just to give you an example, just to compare. Look at six and look at seven.
Okay.
There was, here's Murphy Street, you know, six, back then, before it was done.
Right.
This is now Murphy Street today.
Okay.
It, Murphy Street has drainage for the street. Now, but if you look at, like I say, back at the other drawing, a lot of water came in from both the left and right side, all sheet runner from all the, all back up there. Okay? If you look at this one here now, complete the street, it's basically divided between the three, if you wanna look at that one. Um, follow me?
So this is photo seven is Murphy Street?
Right, Murphy Street, looking from Crossley, looking up Murphy Street, as it's constructed today.
It looks like it has drains.
My house is, is just to the left of that shed. I'm right there. That's his tool shed.
Okay.
Now, the thing is, any water now that comes down here, catch basins in the street, manage that. The water over on the right side goes into a detention basin that's just behind that shed. That's my other neighbor over three Crossley Street. Just to give you, like I say, if you wanna look back.
That the Rigby's or the Peters?
No, that's, that's three, which is, um, I don't know, Juan's house. If you look on this first.
You said in this direction?
No, 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 don't, don't look at this one yet.
Well, you said the water is going, uh, in a detention pond. I'm trying to determine where the detention.
Flip back to page one there. Between lots twenty-one and three, okay, on that drawing, is a detention basin.
Lots twenty-one, am I missing a twenty-one?
Yeah, right, twenty-one and three. That, between there, in, in there, is a detention basin. It was built in there as part of the Century Estates contractor, Caraffas. So all the water that comes down on the, on that, like I say, on the right side, goes into that basin, is captured. Agreed?
I don't, I mean.
Okay?
I, I understand, yes.
Okay, now, go back to this, sheet seven, back to this Murphy Street. Now, we'll look at all the water coming from the, the land, you know, up behind, coming down on the left side, towards my shed, in that area, my house, my lot. Okay? It has no basin. It all accumulates in my yard. And it also floods where this proposed house is going at sixteen Murphy.
So your house is the property with the shed?
Yeah, just, just off to the left.
So where is the water accumulating?
Hold on, Lou, we're getting you.
You brought it up, that's why I'm asking.
I sure did. Okay? We can go through this two or three times if you want. I mean, well, then happen, you know. Alright?
Just trying to understand what you're saying, sir.
Yeah, 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 okay.
No, keep going. Don't answer my question.
Looking back and forth to the top one. Now, looking on sheet number eight. This house is at thirty.
Oh.
Which is back, this is the last house that was built under the Century Estates.
Okay.
Construction. Okay?
That is.
Alright.
Here. That would be here.
Yeah.
Okay.
What would be here?
You said that house is thirty, correct?
Correct, right.
Which would be number?
It would be here on.
Oh, yeah, we can't see it.
I haven't seen this, what drawing is this one? Oh, yeah, right, okay, back up through, right, okay.
It's one more.
It's one more.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's this one. It's not twenty-two.
Now, as you notice, when you look at this, again, when all the houses that were built on Century Estates, they were all backfilled, all found, everything, and how come?
Cause they have to be two feet above the water.
Well, yeah, but how can we have to raise it? As you can see.
Cause it has to be two feet above the water.
I know, I, I know. And, because of water, right?
Yeah.
So when you look at this house.
Mm-hmm.
It's raised. There's water, okay? Alright, so far? Now, looking on the, at the house on sheet eight, if you go from the left side, oh, looking at it. Now, before the house was actually built, before the foundation was gonna be poured, or dug, excavated, or whatever, if you were standing there on that point, on the left side, right, right here.
Yeah.
You were just to stand there before the house was built, you're gonna be on sheet nine.
Where that ditch was, where that?
No, no, wait, wait, let me go through the whole thing and then.
Go ahead.
Cause there's a lot of stuff that's into play here.
Go ahead.
Okay? So if you're staying at that point, go with sheet nine. Right where that. Right where that stone is, where you're standing, now you're looking down Murphy Street, okay? Which is, like I say, if you look from, now, this is from lot thirty, and you're looking down, let's say, the right side of Murphy Street. What I'm trying to basically say there is, that's a trench that was excavated.
Yeah.
And the reason why, because when the house builder was going to build the house, he found water. How am I going to pour a foundation if there's water there? How about if I just put a gully there or a ditch and let that water drain off? That's how reasonable it'd be.
Was it left there?
No, wait, wait, okay?
Getting ahead of you again.
I'm trying to do it to find a timeline, is that what you're saying?
Go ahead.
So when was this picture taken?
This one here, well, this is probably three years ago, when we had, rebuilding that foundation, roughly, in there.
And this picture is where on Murphy Street?
If you go back to house thirty. If you go back to sheet number eight.
They'll do on sheet one for me.
Yeah, would...
Okay, if you're on sheet one, and you're at the, let's say, the, what far corner, the corner of, at Murphy Street on that far corner, roughly?
What number?
It's thirty Murphy, right?
You're saying that's from thirty Murphy?
Right, 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 okay, go ahead.
I'm just asking...
You just write it down.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing pictures, and you're asking me to paint the picture, I'm trying to...
Confusing, I, right.
I'm trying to keep it from being confusing.
So anyway, going back now to this first, sheet nine. So the contractor excavated the ground so the water could drain off where he wants to put the foundation, this whole house at thirty, okay? Now, if you go over to ten, it's just, I'm just a little bit further down the line, you can still see the water that's coming down. It would have been nice if Murphy Street, as you saw earlier, wasn't completed, and this water could have gone down there, but anyway, it's another story. Okay, so that's number ten, we still, that's that ditch going out of that foundation, because if you look back, you see the stone back up on the top half? That's where that foundation is going to be poured, or at least excavated, okay? All right? Now, we're going to jump to the next house, the one that was just built by EMK Trust, which was done by Colonel Point. Now, this is number twen, look on the top sheet, this is number twenty-two in a dotted line. It was built like last year, okay? All right. You look at the house, the same thing, I mean, do you notice anything about, I mean, anything?
It's high.
It's high.
Yeah.
And why, how come?
Because again...
Water, right, right. Now, just looking off on this house, if you look on the left side, it's a slope, it's sloped down, right? The lawn, right, because it's all raised up. Okay, now go over there to sheet twelve. You see that white pipe there?
Yep.
That's all the gutter, gutter water comes off the house and goes out there, and if you go a little further down the left on sheet twelve, that's my lot, number seven, further down the hill, where all the water's coming.
After you cross over Chamberlain Street, after you cross over EMK's lot.
Yeah.
Say that again, after Chamber, which dotted street.
Yeah, so number twenty-two, right, that, right, out of right there is that pipe, that's that white pipe.
Yep.
And the water just trickles all right down and accumulates all through here, okay?
And that's where they want to build now?
That's what they want to build, okay?
So I would think you want an island in between that and your house.
Exactly. No. I don't. Because this water, like I say, I've been through Caroffus, I've been through Rosen Realty, and they all gave me these, all these fantastic solutions, nothing's changed.
This is yours, this is your backyard?
This is my backyard where that water collects, okay?
Yeah.
Now...
When was that?
This one here, since I didn't have any substantial rain this winter, last, last spring, that's where all this occurred. Now, this, I agree, this is kind of extreme, but anytime I have more than, say, one inch or more in a rainstorm, water accumulates.
Is that the old RIFs?
Yeah, that is, yeah.
That's the old RIFs?
And again, as you look there, if you look on sheet number fourteen, and you look in the back, you see, everything's puddling, it's completely flooded. You see, all, looking all the back, you see all that, all this water, see, it's all, you can see the reflections, all that water, that's all in lot, so house number sixteen that they proposed.
Is that before we wrapped the catch basin was installed?
Well, hold on now.
Yeah, the storm drag, right?
That's not Gil or catch basin, that's my catch basin. Because I couldn't get Rosen or anybody to, because what happens, once they built that Murphy Street, you know, blacktop and all that, I'm going to base a fishbowl in water. And I said, what the hell are you going to do to fix it? Well, I get desperate, and I end up literally on my own ticket, my own ticket, I installed that catch basin to alleviate the water. That shouldn't be. But I couldn't get anybody to, you know, play ball here, and I had how many years with Caroffus, it was just useless. So again, looking at the very last one, sheet fifteen, same issue, this is a little further over, now, this is looking at lot here, this is looking at the back of here, okay, looking at my adjacent neighbor's house lot, that's where that shed is, that's that shed.
Which isn't technically, that shed is on...
No, but to show...
Yes.
Yeah?
Oh, that property.
That shed is on lot twenty-two, technically. Excuse me, lot sixteen.
Yes.
Technically.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So it is...
Now, but as you can see, the same, if you look in the woods, again, again, this is where part of sixteen is proposed, see all the standing water and everything? This happens frequently over the years, I'm flooded. My sun pump...
Well, that shed is basically a budding known wetlands, right?
Right. Well, he's looking right across to what that's...
That shed was built by Kelly's, who, Lisa Kelly lived there for many years.
I have.
So her family built that shed. So anyway.
So your contention, sir...
Is it all the wa...
Wait, wait. Your contention is that your flooding has been created by the construction of the properties in this direction.
Yeah, prior.
Right, because the water's not crossing the street.
Oh, no, doesn't cross the street at all.
So it's going, in this case, it's going from the bottom of the page, correct?
Primarily from...
From the bottom of the page towards your house on the corner.
Not, not from the bottom of the page, I'd say from lot thirty, see lot thirty?
Okay.
Because that's the crust of the hill.
So you're saying the water's flowing in this direction?
Right.
All right.
And it's not just surface water, I find it, you know, if you dig down one or two feet down the sink, you can see waters coming through, you know, subterranean movement of water, and it floods, it floods there.
So how's the vintage put the basin in?
Well, it is, but I maintain, I can't let leaves clutter it, I have, now, since I have Murphy Street in, people throw plastic bags and rubbish out, I have plastic bags, so everything gets plugged up.
And your worry is that if they build on here, it's going to cause more flooding here?
If you, this is going to be, if you're built on a mountain, no question, just like the other two up, further up the hill, it's going to be out. So it's going to be built.
So it goes, I'm sorry, it goes what, about four feet up, Sean? From what I'm seeing?
Let's see, top of foundation...
I'm seeing one eighty-five, one eighty-six, one eighty-seven, that's three, I'm assuming it probably goes one eighty-eight, so that's four.
But the lawn itself... It's one, it's, well, it, proposed grade is one eighty-eight, one eighty-seven, and the street is one eighty-six, so all this water flows down here. This flows out this way towards these, this all goes towards these basins, this is higher, so this actually reduces flow coming over here.
What?
Yep.
Oh, so everything's going this way?
I know, but it won't when it's done, it's one eighty-eight, one eighty-seven, it's going to flow, it flows towards the road into these basins, there's another, there's...
I think, I think he's, I think he's going to say that he's heard that before.
I've heard that before from Caroffus.
Well, that's, that's what the grade shows.
Well, okay, but mother nature is doing things different, believe me.
I mean, is there any way we could put more, more help in here?
Now, now, it's completely, now, hold on.
Go ahead.
Now, looking at this last drawing we had of my neighbor's shed, okay, the water over my neighbor, which is James and Kathy Rigby. This sun pump pumps out into that land there.
So that land is really low, right?
Okay, now, if they, if they go ahead and build this house away the, your boundaries or your landlot is defined, where's, where are the Rigby's going to pump their sun pump water? See, right now...
Same place.
Well, you're not supposed to be pumping that into the wetlands, so don't say that.
Well, where do I pump it to?
And it's to our lot, too.
Pumping the street?
Rich, that's, that's been going on since the fifties, it's, it's just a kind of continued thing, it's not illegal for them to do that.
Again, he has a major wa, if I have a water issue, my neighbor has a lot of water issues, too.
Can I, all right, I don't want to interrupt you, if you're wrapping up, I had a few things.
All right.
But all this water keeps coming down all the time, and like you say, it's a shame, it's a shame when our children, Murphy Street, all constructed beautiful street, all that catch basin works great for the street.
Yeah, yeah.
But for me over on the left-hand side, that water just keeps...
And that's why you had to put the basin in yourself?
Yeah, this basin here, I put, I put in myself.
Murphy Street wasn't helping your situation?
Once they put that curbing in, I'm damned in, completely watered damned in, I mean, it was ridiculous, my sun pump, I'm going like hell with the sun pump, I'm not saying, is this the way it's going to be for how long?
Now, your concern is them building up, and more water's going to come?
Water has a way of always working around, it's going to seek the lowest point. And I, I'll tell you, I feel sorry for the, whoever buys it, that house is built, and somebody buys it, God help them. I mean, I know, I know we put some, just like even this, obviously, they all have some pumps.
Yeah.
Means Abington, everyone has a sun pump.
Everyone's got one.
There's a beaver on our town logo.
Right.
Yeah, but I mean...
But basically...
I have three sun pumps.
When I look at the way the, see, I never had the water issue there before. He, human beings have now manufactured a wetland swamp right here, they really have, in effect, because the water is now, because it used to go down this stream that I had years ago, working fine, but now, it's forced down here, and like I say, it's not just sheet runoff, but you've got the terraining water that's coming in.
Oh, I think you've been called back to your seat.
Okay, how long have you had a sun pump?
How long have we had it? Since nineteen seventy.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Standing water there right now, it's not pumping right this minute, because I don't have any rain.
I agree.
But as soon as it starts raining, I'm pumping it.
I'm just trying to prove the fact that there was a water problem in nineteen seventy, before Murphy Street was built, before Caroffus was there.
Yeah, but I think he's...
I had a...
I gotta talk to the chairman, I can't talk to him.
I had a stream down here that took all that water off of there.
Right.
And I had no issue.
I understand you, I understand.
Thank you. We're going to keep all that, unless you want a copy back?
No, we need one for the records.
Put your records.
Okay.
Are you going to use, are you going to read it again, look at it again?
I...
It's required reading, because you know, it's required reading.
We have a lot of people today, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. You keeping any of those?
I'm going to keep on for Nancy.
You can keep going? No, that's it.
Okay.
Okay. Next.
Good morning, good evening.
Good evening.
Don't have too much, no offense to Mr. Berry, my name's Chris Afson, I live at twenty-five Crossley Street. Sir, I'm not blanketly opposed to this, I am somewhat opposed to the waiver of the impact study. No offense, Walter, Mr. Berry, but my house is mostly in that floodplain.
And where are you, right here?
So if you look at this, the drawing, Christopher and my wife Jessica, that's where we live, right here.
And do you see...
What I see the issue is, is that there's going to be more water already poured on to where we are.
Okay.
Which...
And how was your lien to this, is it higher or is it lower?
It's all low, everything, it's about the same size right here.
Yeah, when I saw that picture, did you get to see it?
I have some pictures that you can, it'll probably be easier to see.
I think what we're just trying to determine, sir, is, from your comment, is the water flowing from Crossley Street, are you, are you higher than this lot, or are you lower than this lot?
Right, right.
I guess that's what we want to know.
The lot you're proposing to build?
Yes, the lot, the lot that is there. The lot that is there.
So if you, and again, and I'll give you an idea, and I apologize, but it may just be easier to show. You can see the topography of the land, where I am is probably the bottom of everything here.
Well, when we look at this picture. I mean, this picture right here shows how low it is.
It is low, behind that.
Okay, so are you even with this, or are you higher than this?
Relatively even, I mean, the water does flow somewhat towards the LeBruns, which you were looking at.
So when they say that everything's going this way, do you think it's going to affect you?
I think if the diverted flow is even more than it is now, that, that it has to, and the only reason I say that, and, and, again, is, if you look at what happened in twenty eighteen, we had a storm, it was March of twenty eighteen, this will give you a good idea, and I'll show you, this is the other side, so you can see where I am.
Yeah, the flat.
So this is my backyard, that uprooted pine tree is this pine tree here, when you look at the bottom of it, where it came up, you can see where the water table is.
Right.
That, that was the water, that's the reason that that pine tree was uprooted.
Yeah.
And to divert more water on, I get the sun pumps, I bought the house with two sun pumps.
Yep, yep.
I knew her parents, salt of the earth, we all know how wet it is there, and the fact that my pumps have now been going on when they usually don't go on. It's fifteen hundred watts every time, my wife is on me about the electric bill, there's not much I can do with it, I've been trying to fill in somewhat with just yard waste and, and an extra loom that I get when I had my yard done over, but it, it's really low there, and that's not even where the, the wetlands are drawn out on this, as you can see, they're behind the Rigby's house mostly, that they're, but honestly, it goes all the way to the fence, it goes all the way to the back of the property line, and that's where that uprooted tree in that picture is. Now, when I first bought the house, twelve or thirteen, I don't even know how long ago, my first thought when I looked out back was, there's three or four pine trees that are house killers, if they ever fell on my house, the whole thing's just going to explode.
Right.
I don't have that problem as much anymore, because what you see in the pictures, are two of those four giant pine trees fell horizontally to my house, there is one left, that's relatively close, but those started falling, again, starting in twenty eighteen, when Century Estates was built, the water table obviously got higher, some pumps that weren't running in the summertime, and now all of a sudden running, it did do something underneath, so when you look at that uprooted pine tree there, that puddle of water is almost three feet deep, when it took up the foot of earth, it made beer what's underneath there, what all our pumps are pumping up, and the fact is, I just, I'm uncomfortable with waiving an impact study just based on the arrow direction, the surface flow of the water, coming back to something that's already waterlogged. Look at this winter, we haven't had any snow, barely had any rain, I mean, and it's still muddy back there, but it isn't bad, like, I think we all could take a breather on this one, but the pictures that Mr. Berry showed, I remember that day, that it was a literal flood, and that was, again, Century Estates, Caroffus took all the trees out that first year, there's nothing for the water to bring on, too, and it was an extreme, it was an extreme situation, but the fact is that, that when you show me that you're diverting everything basically into my backyard, and again, no offense to Mr. Berry and Mr. Rigby, I clearly have the highest or most floodplain in my property line, and, and again, I'm not blanketly opposed to this, it's their property, I'm a capitalist, do whatever you want with your property, as long as it doesn't affect mine, and that's kind of why I'm somewhat opposed to the waiver of the impact study for the Environmental Protection or Wetlands Protection Act, and it's, I think that, again, they're family, great people.
Yep.
They clearly have learned counsel, I've been with them for twenty-one years, I've heard great things about Mr. Riley, the builder's impeccable, it's gone to point like they said, again, nothing but great things about the builder, and I'm not blanketly opposed to them building the house there, but the fact is, that's extremely wet back there, my sun pumps are fifteen hundred watts every time they turn on, I have two of them, my electric bills are kind of getting astronomical at this point, and I'm just afraid that if we're diverting water to where it's already wet, where it's already, are they going to go perpetual? I can't have a sun pump all this time.
And you have to look, too, that, I mean, he had to build a catch basin with his own money over here to cover the flow that was going this way, now it's going this way towards you.
Again, I'm not blanketly opposed to...
Oh, I understand, but this is why we do this, because we want to know.
Chris, don't worry about it.
We want to know all the information.
The wetlands aren't going to be affected, they're not going to be changed, but if we're going to waive the study, like, it doesn't seem prudent to me in this day and age to waive an environmental impact study, and I'm not getting into like the animals or the squirrels or any of that, it's just clear from the picture, and I only going to put a couple pictures and show you the trees that are falling, and the water, and the water table, so that, that's my issue, and I hope the board understands it.
Yep. Want to say, ask Moser?
Well, no, I mean, it's just generally, it's because the property is in the floodplain and wetland overlay district.
Yeah.
Is why they don't necessarily do a study, because he's not constructing on wetlands. Is why they don't necessarily do a study, cause he's not constructing on wetlands, where then it gets a lot more, and he's not replicating wetlands. I mean.
Yeah.
You look, and if I'm correct, that's a federal map that the floodland, wetland overlay.
FEMA flood map is much different than the town's floodplain overlay map, it's completely different.
Okay, so this is the towns.
This is not a FEMA flood zone.
And this is based on hundred-year storms or something like that?
It's based on a nineteen seventy-six map, it's never been updated.
Which, I mean, we're not doubting it's wet.
Correct.
I mean, there's wetlands way in the backyard, but.
But we are also, um, we're not ignoring these people, I mean.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not minimizing.
You know, I mean, these are low-level houses over here, and the water is going this way.
Right.
Instead of going this way. You're, you're filling up back here.
Yeah.
Can I give you some information to?
Well, I just go, is it one, one more person?
I'm James Hirt, the, uh, I'm inside at seventeen Crossley Street. Bought a house from the Kellys about six years ago. Um, they were gonna take it to shut down. I asked if I could keep it, they told me I could have it for ten years for an extra thousand dollars, which I believe is in my paperwork at home. If they build a house back there, where do, where do I pump the water up? And by the way, I, I've had to replace the some pump since they built the houses back there, because it burned it out, there was so much water coming in. When I first moved in, before the houses were built, it would kick on once in a while, but again, the electricity bill is, is through the roof.
So it seems, it seems to me that the, the building, the new construction that's been involved in this whole area is affecting these houses right here.
One of, one of the reasons I moved from where I was is cause I could finally buy a house, and I, I, I didn't, I loved it because no one was sitting on top of me. If, if they build a house, it's gonna be right outside my, you know, right outside my back door. It's, it's, you know, you talk about hardship, I, I've had my share of it lately, you know, the last couple of years. I get sick, you know, um, I, I'm, I'm doing my best to try to keep my family in the house. It just seems to me every time I turn around, it's like, you know, uh, like I said, I had to replace the some pump. Luckily, it didn't kick off until the rain stopped and pumped most of the water out of the house. I did have some issues, you know, with that. It gets very wet back there. I'm gonna be the briefest, you know, these guys are a little more intelligent than I am.
I would say that.
Yeah, they are. I just, you know, wanna voice my displeasure, I, I moved cause I didn't want people on top of me.
Okay.
And now it's, now we're gonna have people on top of me.
Alright.
Alright?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
We gotta make it short though, we got a lot of.
Well, well, one more comment.
Okay.
Whatever this, whatever the outcome is here, I now manage the water that floods in that area.
Yes.
Behind my house. Whatever the outcome is, I will not, I'm not gonna manage the flood, whatever it be, it becomes. It's gonna be somebody else's responsibility, just, just letting you know, whether it's the new homeowners or even the, the trust people here. That's what it's gonna be, cause I am, I'm done managing water in it to this degree.
Thank you. Are we all set? Alright, I gotta bring it back to the board.
I had a, I'd like to.
Yes, you can go, you, I'll, you do, go ahead.
I just wanted to give you a, this is the actual original subdivision plan for nineteen fifty-one, just for reference. A lot of these houses on Crossley Street were built in the fifties, sixties, right?
What's the highlighted chunk?
That's, that's the Locust Lot, that's the, the lot, uh, that E M K owns, the Kelly family, some of the remaining property. Back in the fifties, it's, as Mr. Berry noted, he had a some pump since the seventies. He's exactly right, I've, I've seen the presentation that Mr. Berry just gave at the planning board. I was not part of the Caroffus subdivision approvals, and he is correct that when Mr. Caroffus, and you guys probably weren't on the board back then, Caroffus went in there and clear cut the whole area.
Right, I remember it, yeah.
And then let it sit.
Let it sit for years.
Do a monitoring, so he couldn't do anything, but honestly, I think everyone regrets that he didn't have to go in there and clear cut, cause he knew he couldn't do anything.
Right.
But he wanted to keep his son busy. So he clear cut it, and that's where you saw those, instead of the trees and the soil catching the water, all of a sudden it was sheeting down what was going to be Murphy Street. And those pictures, as he told you, were back in two thousand and seven or so. Don't punish the Kellys for what Mr. Caroffus did back then, and what happened back then doesn't exist now. He also showed you, and he was telling you, that all that water, before Murphy Street was built, was coming towards his house. And he also told you, when Murphy Street was built, all the water on the right stayed away, all the water in the street got collected by the drainage, all the water on the left, some of it was coming towards him. So I think it's fair to say, there was a significant drop in the amount of water that was coming towards him after the drainage system was put in, in Murphy Street. You said that all of it was coming towards you, and then you said a third.
Well, it's close, close to the floor, so.
It was also reviewed by the town's engineer, it was an engineer plan, again, I wasn't, wasn't part of that approval, but that was done. Crossley Street is a low, lower area, it's a flat street and the houses are flat. Back in the fifties and sixties, they didn't raise up, they didn't have the requirement to have the, the foundation two feet above the water table, there's no doubt about it. They have, a lot of people in that area and other areas of town have, have some pumps. Uh, I'm putting some pump in my house that I'm building right now, and I'm above the water table, we put it in anyhow. The, um, for Mr. Afsa, um, just so you know, alright, Chris, we're not touching any of the land behind your house. It's remaining as it is in its, in its condition, you can see the, the line there. So any water that now falls on this lot now, or after it's developed, when it hits the roof, it gets collected by the gutters, it gets recharged into the ground. It doesn't go flying over to the neighbors. Anything that hits the back, behind the house, hits the grass, the soil, and it, there is a slope that goes back, but it's still, we're not touching the topography behind our neighbors over here. Okay, that's not changing. And you have this backyard that's approximately sixty to seven feet long, which now absorbs water. Right now it doesn't, cause it's just gravel out there, or just, it's rough land, it'll be now a lawn, which will absorb some of the rainwater. If it's a heavy rain, it'll continue to flow to the wetlands, which, that's where some of that water sheets as it does now. There is no doubt about it, and Cal Gavi, the engineer, has told you, that the proposal is to take this lot that sheets down towards Mr. Berry, is now gonna be reconformed, so it doesn't all sheet down towards Mr. Berry. So there'll be a reduction in water going to Mr. Berry. And the catch basin in his backyard, I think Mr. Rosen put that in for you.
No.
Who did that?
He did.
I did.
And you connected it to Mr. Rosen and to the street?
Yeah, the only thing I had, I used the, the S L T road guys, myself.
Right. That was put in.
With the material and everything, I provided everything.
So what happened was when the road was built, according to Caroffus's plan, the granite curbing had to go in, and he was concerned that water that, correct me if I'm wrong, used to be able to flow across the property and out onto Murphy Street, now long, no longer could, cause of the granite curbing.
Yeah, when that, that dish was running, yeah.
Right, so there's a catch basin now in that area that helps collect that water and bring it into the drainage system, right? I don't think it was, I don't think.
That's not my property you're talking about.
Correct, right. I don't think there was a proposal that you showed him, with the catch basin, but it's shown on the plan where it's located.
Right, 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 right.
Right, and that's helped.
Storm, right?
But he had to do it.
It was forever.
Yes, there was coordination with the, with the road contractor that built this, so there's been an improvement there. So there's less water than two thousand and seven. There's a catch basin in the backyard, and we are now designing it so there's less water from this lot. This lot is not part of the Century Estate subdivision. This is the Kelly family's lot, that they've owned since nineteen eighty-four. They're building a single-family house, and they're building it in a, according to the proper building code, to keep it, to not have a wet basement, like some of the older houses from the fifties and sixties do. And that's why, because houses back then, they didn't raise them up. So this is good construction, and we do care about our neighbors, and that's why they've agreed to sell to Glenn the point, because they know he will build it and make sure that it will minimize any property. With this plan, it shows you that there should be no increase in the amount of water from their property onto the Berry's property. There's nothing here that shows you.
Okay, but what about the other neighbors?
Same thing here, we're not taking, any, not, uh, uh, the back half of that lot is not changing. What you see out there is what you get. If you have rainwater flowing over your backyard, there's no way it's going to overrun the wetlands in that back hundred and fifty feet, and then flood the neighbors.
But there's water underneath too that's going.
Yes, and that exists right now. Exists right now, right? When it rains, it exists right now, there's, there are basement problems there right now, but we are not gonna exacerbate that. It's, uh, we're not enlarging the lot, it's, we're, actually adding the lawn will help with the absorption. Adding the gutters going into the ground will help with recharging.
Can you explain that part?
Recharging?
No, well, yeah, the gutters go, I mean, I.
The lawn?
Is there gonna be, um, what's gonna manage the water? Like, is it going into a, uh, uh, you know, a dry well or, you know, like, what's the technology behind that on the?
Dorsey Street behind us?
Dorsey Street is, is at the other end of Chamberlain Street. It's a couple hundred feet down there. Glenn, could you explain what the downspouts into the dry wells?
Yes, we dig a dry well away from the house. It's going in, it runs into the, it's just charged, it goes into the ground, back into the ground, instead of just going over, over the surface.
I mean, I've seen that on commercial properties, I just haven't seen that, um, that's not so common on residential properties, so that's why I was asking about that. And is that going to be, um, in the back of the property or the front of the property, sir?
Usually on the sides, on the rear.
So just to give you an idea of what the overall looks like. The house is going up here, and this is all the land behind it. Just to give you an idea.
Here's an area that you can show Cal just gave us. This is Crossley Street, Murphy Street, this is where the house would be built, right there. There's a new house right there, that's Mr. Berry. This house would be right up there, in line, there'd be nothing happening back here, while the trees are. So I understand, and I emphasize with our neighbors who have water problems.
Right.
But there's nothing here to demonstrate that this is going to exacerbate it, it's not. Anything, there might be a reduction or improvement in it. And remember, we're actually creating that berm along the Berry property to try to make it stay on ours and, and absorb back into our property.
So, I mean, I see, Sean, like, I think this proposal will, um, help Mr. Berry. Okay, because water's gonna be to go to the street, or it's going to the backyard, so you have, you know, whatever this section is of, you know, say that's a hundred feet, just for argument's sake. That's a hundred feet of water that would normally flow in this direction that won't get.
Other way, you're going the wrong way.
That won't get to Mr. Berry's yard.
Correct, it's kinda like a buffer, push it this way.
It's gotta go around one way or another, and if it goes to the street, it hits catch basins, and if it goes this way, um, it's going towards, um.
Some of it's gonna fall back to.
Towards the Afsa and towards the Rigby.
Some of it's gonna fall back to its Chamberlain Street.
Right.
Some of it's gonna go towards the street and be collected by the street drainage system, so less water that is flowing.
So I, I guess, and I understand that, so I think for Mr. Berry, if it's built correctly, it will help him.
Yeah.
I think it might, I mean, I'm not an engineer, I, I, I don't know how to, I, I can read numbers and all, um. My feeling is it might increase a little bit of water going to the back. It may, it may, it may be net neutral, or it might be net positive a little bit behind Mr. Afsa and Mr. Rigby's property. I mean, again, I don't know, and, and it's not, I can't make that judgment, just kinda looking at it, I see some of the water is mitigating that way that would normally go on Mr. Berry's property.
And if you notice, the dark lines show proposed new topography.
Right.
The light dotted lines show existing that is not being changed. So everything behind Mr. Rigby's house and Mr. Afsa's house, the, the topography is not changing.
Great, so on the Chamberlain's side, Chamberlain is higher than the center of the lot.
It is currently, Chamberlain is approximately one eighty-eight, and the center of the lot is approximately one eighty-six.
Right, so the water will flow to the center of the lot, and then there, there aren't.
That's where it currently goes.
Correct, there aren't topography lines beyond where it says shed to be removed, and we don't know precisely what that topography line is, where it says shed to be removed.
That's one eighty-four there.
Okay, so we're safe to say that it is still flowing towards the Rigby-Afsa property.
Marshall, what, what is, um, right?
No. Well, here comes Cal.
It really keeps going that way.
Why don't you speak, you're the engineer, you can answer.
Yeah, I mean, basically, if, if you look at the D, D wetland map, Crossley Street is somewhat higher than this area that's in the middle of the lot, everything is going this way. Uh, the water runs down here, you can see there's a, there's a wetland, once you get down to Dorsey, behind the last two houses on Crossley Street, that is a wetland that was, um, they actually replicated that when they put Dorsey Street in. They tied that drainage in, they ran it down the street, so basically, all this water in here, all this area flows down here, goes into Dorsey Street, uh, then it goes down further to Dorsey Street, it goes down another Chamberlain Street, which was part of the, um, um, Caroffus subdivision. What we've tried to do on this plan is reduce the runoff to the abutters, if you look at the flow arrows, even house number twenty-two, that drained towards Chamberlain Street, this will now be kicked out through here, these basins will pick it up. This front area from the center of the house, the driveway is all flowing this way. It all flowed this way before, okay? We're reducing runoff to Berry, Rigby, and Peters.
Marshall, what, the impact, um, the impact, um, study, what's that entail?
The Conservation Commission, we submitted.
I mean, do.
What did Conservation say?
It was a negative determination.
And, and what?
Means it does not apply to the Wetlands Protection Act. We would not have to file a notice of intent.
Alright.
So there's no other stage of, of making them, you know, the biggest problem with these things is, it's like the last house being built, okay? Everything else has been a disaster, it is what it is, but you're the last house being built in this area, and you have neighbors that have water problems that have increased over the years because of the construction. This is the last house being built. So what are you gonna do for the neighbors, more for the neighbors, so they don't get water? What more can you do for them? That's the question.
But we didn't have to put the berm in, you know, none of the houses there have a berm, we put the berm in, that's what we're proposing for you to accept, that the berm, that's, what that means is when the water flows towards.
Yeah, I know what a berm is, I'm just saying, is there anything more you can do for them that will, that will help the impact of the water? This is the last house being built in this area.
I, I agree, exactly.
And now, the, the, when you get to the last house, and these people are not lying to us, they're telling you to get more and more water, what more can you do for them?
As we've said, this, and Mr. Mullina said, this actual design, when completed, would be an improvement to what, is it sitting there now? Sorry, Cal.
That's all detention basin in here that collected all that water, goes here, goes down there. This, that whole area's been reduced, is a huge detention basin, just not, just on this side of this house here.
But as, as.
All detention basin, it picks up all this runoff, there's another detention basin over here, they've created.
But right, right here, you're talking the water's going this way right now.
Not as much as it used to, because.
Now you're talking it's, it's going into these people's backyards.
No, I'm, I'm not saying that, no, no, it's not.
Well, there are arrows here pushing right into the wetlands.
That is no, that is no wetlands.
Says right here, frag, isolated wetlands.
Non-jurisdictional.
But it's.
That's the circle.
Yeah, it's a circle, it's not, it's, it's, it's a little puddle, yeah. It's non-jurisdictional, it's not a wetland. And that was determined by.
That's what the Conservation.
And that was determined by the Conservation Commission.
They determined that?
Yeah, and this.
Shows you that there are wetlands far closer towards Dorsey Street, as you went down Chamberlain Street towards Dorsey, that's where the water eventually ends up in, in, uh, heavy storms.
Now, remembering, was it two thousand and eighteen was referenced earlier, everyone was flooded, that was, that was.
Well, we, we get that, but this is the last house being built, and you have neighbors that are complaining, and, 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 again, the water goes north, and now you're gonna make it go west? South, south, everywhere.
Yes, we're gonna disperse it so that less water is going north.
I hope so, I hope that's, you know.
Well, let me, that, that's where the proposed topography line show you. Sorry. Right, in front of the house, it's one eighty-eight, and then it goes down.
I see how it rises up, and you're putting the berm there.
So it goes down this.
But what about these two houses here? What are you gonna do for them? You've, you've done something for Mr. Berry, you've, you've done something here, but what about the water that goes into there? There's not gonna be.
By not changing this, we, we're not exacerbating any issues that they have right now. We can't rectify the fact that they do have, um, you know, some pumps and all, but we certainly cannot be dumping more water to make it worse, and we're not, look, more than, but half the lot is, is untouched. We're not changing the conditions back there. We're not changing the conditions back here. You know, this will be an improvement, much like the house at number 22 was improving.
So, there's no more improvement you could do on that?
Right.
Then nothing else you could do to help the people who live behind?
Other than putting the lawn, topography, the roof drains, those three things alone will be, and, and the berm, four things will be-
So, does, does their lawns, does, does the Rigby, Rigby and the Peters property, in essence, drain this way? When it drains, or, I mean, it can't drain to the street, right? I mean, it could, but I don't think it is. Because the, the, the property owners are saying that they're getting water in their backyard, right? So-
Well, the front, the front of their lots, their driveways, everything drain towards the street. The back of the yards actually drain onto our site, onto this particular site here.
If you swale this, you would make it worse because you would, you would, in essence, and, and anything they pumped out would stay in their yard and all that kind of stuff, so-
Right.
Uh, creating a, uh, you know, continuing the berm would, would almost make it-
Oh, yeah, you would, yeah.
You do not want to do that.
No, you wouldn't want to do it, yeah.
They'd have to manage their water 100%.
I mean, for putting the berm all the way down here?
Yeah, if they did that, then when, when Mr. Rigby runs his pump, it's just gonna, just gonna fill his backyard up. And same with Mr. AFSA, because-
It would prevent their water from flowing off.
Because if this is, it seems to me that this area, because that's not wetlands, but it kind of is.
It's low, it's low air, it's in the floodplain overlay.
That's, in essence, the low point, because if there was another low point, there would be another circle somewhere, most likely, right?
Go ahead, no, no.
No?
No, I'm sorry, I closed it to the floor, so. Marshall, anything to say?
Yeah, I just went through some of this, and predominantly, the, uh, this, uh, this statement that you'd be looking for here, a lot of it's been gone through. If it's in the A, in the AE district, Wetlands Protection District, and it's going to Conservation. Conservation is required to give their opinion regards to how it's being handled, et cetera. And it's to be designed by an engineer, which it's already been done here. I don't know that, and it deals with drainage for catch basins and retention basins, and how it's all supposed to be handled, which doesn't apply to a single-family lot, which is why these permits are typically issued for single families. We don't see them, because they predominantly go forward with planning with larger properties, like, like, the families, which is what's happening.
So, what's the board thinking?
I think this is to help Mr. Berry's backyard. I mean, I don't know in regards to Rigby and Peters.
Right. Or anyone else, I mean, anyone else too, that's off the grid, yeah.
That's all wet woods, so that's-
But these are houses over here too, so. But the one thing is, the driveway is gonna push more water off to the street.
Right. For a special permit. I don't think they're asking for a lot.
I, I, you know.
That's my opinion.
I just hope it all works out, if it does go through, because shame for the other neighbors. I mean, what, what is the impact study gonna, gonna make them do anyway? Marshall?
Nothing more than what they've done here now, because I can't see that anything else is pretty much done.
Right.
Whatever you could do.
There's basically nothing else they could do, except not build the house, right?
Is there any process where we can have, like, like I said, the town engineer or some independent individual assess this?
I guess you could shoot grids and find out if Caraffas would let you put a drain in, much like that was done on lot seven, Berry's lot.
Caraffas doesn't own it, in this lot.
You probably, Berry probably had to get permission to tie in, I know I've done that once.
Well, are they willing, are they willing to put, are they willing to put a catch basin in, on that land?
Can you do that, though? Because now you're starting to drain-
Onto here.
There's nothing, there's nothing-
There's nothing more you can do?
No, there's, first of all, we're not, and I mean this with all respect to everyone, this, to build their single-family house on their lot, they're not obligated to improve things on their neighbors. What they cannot do is worsen things to their neighbors, no doubt about it. We're demonstrating that we're not changing what's behind their neighbors. And with the topography, with the berm, with the catch, uh, the, the roof drains, with the fact that it's not a septic system, but it's sewer, all of that is going to help now control the water, where right now it's uncontrolled. It's uncontrolled.
It's gotta control, and water's gonna go to, more to the back, possibly, more water to the back.
Some water, if, if you follow the existing topography, some water already goes that way. That's where the existing topography, some of it goes towards Berry, some of it goes at an angle towards-
So, would you be willing to put a cage, excuse me, a catch basin on the land?
I will bet you it's going to be engineeringally impossible, because if you see the, see the catch basin, it says rim elevation of 184.
Yeah.
See that? That means the top of that basin is at 184. So, the next one you put has to be higher.
Okay.
Because everything slopes. If you, if you follow the elevations, the Rigby's and the Peters backyards are-
I don't mean that, I mean, just on that, right by the house, cage, just the-
We'd have to put it in the back, it's right, because there's only about a six inches difference from the back of the yachts to rig the catch basin.
I don't know, you wouldn't put another catch basin, it makes-
It suggests to me that without this island, right?
Yeah.
The water flows this way, right now, right? I mean, what I'm sa-
Well, this obviously held right here.
Yeah, the catch basin absolutely held, but, you know, what doesn't hit the catch basin is, is now migrating to the right on that.
Yeah, okay.
So-
Just throwing it out there. It's only something maybe to help the neighbors, that's all. But you do.
Kyle, I think, designed it with that intention.
Yeah, well.
We don't, we don't design things to create problems for neighbors, we try to improve the situation.
Well, yeah, but maybe, maybe a little bit more would have helped, that's all.
We change the, the direction of the water in the front of the house to the-
Sure, let's see that. Let's see it. Let's see it. Here, guys.
Any statements?
Oh, I mean, I understand, I mean, to the chair's point, this is the last house, you know, in, in the complex, so how much can you contribute to the fact that they, you know, wanna build, you know, within their property? But I understand the neighbor skepticism that they've been hearing for 20 years now that things are gonna get better, and they have not been. So, but, I mean, to Marshall's point, there's not much more, even if we require an environmental impact statement, the information's there.
Right.
It's not gonna change anything.
Just formality, I guess.
I'll make a motion on the petition of BMK Trust, Robert P. Matthews, trustee, PO Box 2257, Abington, for a special permit under 17535, and waiver of environmental impact statement to allow single-family home construction within floodplain Wetlands Protection Overlay District at 16 Murphy Street. Property located on assessors map 51. Lot 394041 in the R30 zone be approved as per plan submitted.
All favor?
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time, and I do appreciate the input.
Thank you, the neighbors.
Good luck.
Look.
Counting on you, Glenn.
Yeah, come on, make, make your magic. Make your magic.
It's being a little after 7:15 PM. Abington zoning board appeals, we hear the petition of Daniel Zomani. 20 Berry Road, Abington, for a variance under 17521 for a side setback relief of 11 feet. At 20 Berry Road, property located on assessors map 45, lot 104, R30 zone. Can't have enough of us today, huh?
Well, maybe.
You're looking at a new guy, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, Kyle got the, I prepared a plan for Dan. He lives at 20 Berry Road, which is located off of Shaw Ave. It's an existing house with a detached garage that is presently 16 by 20. He would like to attach a garage to his house, which now becomes part of the house, so the sideline setback requirements change. And he's proposing a 30 by 30 addition that would put the garage roughly nine feet away from the abutting property line. Property lies in the R30 zoning district that requires 20 feet, and therefore, he's requesting a, roughly an 11-foot sideline variance. The subdivision goes back to 1956, when most of these houses on Berry Road were created, and at that time, the sideline setbacks were more different than they are presently. And he's, existing garage actually is, um, under today's standards would be in violation as it's too close to the street. The proposed garage will be moved back to the 35, in excess of 35 feet back from the street. Um, he'd like to construct, it's basically a two-bay garage, I mean, he keeps other yacht equipment in it, and it's always, is somewhat a little bigger than normal, 30 by 30, but that's what Dan would like.
Do you have, do you have like a picture of it, I mean, um, construction?
There's no elevation drawings for it.
Do you have any dimensions, or what's it gonna look like, or?
It'll be, uh, similar to the front of the house, it'll be a dormered cape style, the same pitch.
Okay. Go right ahead.
The existing 22, 1622. It's detached?
It is detached, yeah.
Okay. So, what you, I thought it was attached.
Hmm.
And then you're going to, you're proposing to move the, the new proposed garage back to be conforming front yard.
Correct.
And then, I thought it was an exist, pre, uh, non-conforming side yard two, that was 17.27 feet off the side yard.
Well, that's the existing-
Because that's existing.
That's existing.
Only it had to be 10 feet off, so that was not non-conforming, so now-
It wasn't, yeah, it was, it was only non-conforming to the front setback, not the side setback. Yeah, you're right, Marshall, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking what you needed was, you're just introducing an existing non-conforming, but seeing as this is detached, it's not, so he did ask for a variance, which is correct.
Okay.
Okay, but, um, you wanna go from a one-car garage or two-car garage?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Detached to attached.
To attached. To make it look more forming, if you will, right?
How wide is a standard two-car garage, if there is such a thing?
24, 24 typically.
So, he wants 30, 30. And where'd you come up with the number 30, 30?
I was just looking to maximize my space, I have a boat, I was looking to store in there, as well as, you know, my wife's vehicle, and, and mine, when I can, and looking for the extra room if I could.
Problem is you're getting off close to the, to the side at that point.
Could you just go back further a bit?
Could you do what?
Just go back further, as opposed to-
Well, that wouldn't, that wouldn't impact anything, really, if you did that, because-
Yeah, it would still be nine feet off.
It would actually get closer off that back corner that-
You mean, make it 24?
Yeah.
And then 30?
Or, or whatever, you know, 36.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
You mean, add it, 24, like, 36, instead of the side?
Then you wouldn't need a variance.
Well, it's still-
Yeah, it'd still need a variance.
Yeah, 'cause, um, it's, what's the setback, what's the side yard?
Supposed to be 20 if it's attached.
Yeah, it's 20 feet in the yacht, 30, so.
So, you're-
It'd be within, regardless of the-
Oh, okay.
But you wouldn't be asking for as much.
Right.
And that, there's a difference on that.
Instead of 9.6.
I would, I would almost wanna see some drawings on this, so I know what I'm looking at. It's hard for me to look at overhead boxes in regards to this, and it doesn't have to be, you know, 3D printed color sort of stuff, but I just, um, I'm, I'm nervous about it being so close to the line with, you know, the house in the lot here on the right, that's probably an existing setback, a side yard setback. Yes, so that's about 30 feet from the line there.
It should be, well, you got 20?
At the front corner.
You're talking about the abutting?
Yeah, number 32, the, on the, what's listed as the Griffin property.
Yeah, I mean, the sideline setback, well, like I said, is 20 feet, he's around probably 28, 30 feet, yeah.
Yeah, he looks about 30 there.
Yeah, he's the same width as the garage, that we're proposing, really.
Right. So, I'm not, I'm not in love with it being that close, but I think if I could, you know, if I could see some more drawings of this, um, give me a better understanding of what it looks like, what we're asking for, what you're asking for.
Because we'd like to see if it still conforms with the neighborhood, and what exactly you're building. Because we don't wanna be surprised later on and have it be different or different looking.
In the town, variances are supposed to be hard to get, and they're supposed to be given out sparingly, whichever you'd like. They do get issued for garages and side yard setbacks, so it's not like we're setting precedent. But in, you know, I, I do like to have a better idea, you know, is this 50 feet tall?
55 feet tall.
We need something in drawings.
30 feet tall, you know, something like that, I don't know how, how big this is in comparison.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the existing, existing house is a cape with just, you know, a smaller garage.
It would mimic the front elevation of the house, the existing house. It would be a, nearly, it'd be, it'd be six feet shorter, and we would have a two-dormered front to match. But we have, it'd have the same peak height.
Because we just looked at one of the, one of the first ones, and the garage was bigger than the house, but the way that the whole topography was, it looked okay. It's gonna butt against sets-
Yeah, it's gonna butt against that little wing addition that's coming out.
Is that about 25 to the peak, something like that?
To the peak of the main house?
Of your, of your house, sir.
Uh, yeah, I think it's about 27-ish.
The back is almost like a, the back drops off, it's almost like a complete walkout in the back, to be honest.
Yeah.
Which, moving it further back would require quite a bit of fill, I think, in that back area.
And the, um, so if the garage is the same height as the house, then is the second floor, is there a second floor? Is it just open, is it?
It would be, uh, it'd be planned for storage.
So, the side is supposed to be 20, correct? And the front edge is supposed to be 35. So, on the new garage, you'd make the front edge, correct? So, all he's asking for is the side. So, it's like you said, I mean, do you need it that big?
So, how wide is-
So how wide is the, that's where?
We might get it tonight.
You're still gonna have that little cutout, like the entryway, and so you're just abutting?
That's right, yeah, it'd be set, that deck in the breezier would be set back from the front.
Okay.
Yeah, that's kind of, he's got a, that's kind of a new deck and new stairs on that, coming off that present entryway.
Again, we don't, we don't like to, you know, variances...
Some evidence of a hardship.
Yeah, where is the hardship? You're right. I mean, it's a great idea to build a new two-car garage for your house, but you're really getting close to the lot on the side.
And the idea, I mean, if there's a hardship, I mean, the idea would be that they're, my wife and kids wouldn't be getting out of the vehicle on an icy driveway and walking across it. They'd have the opportunity to go inside the house and...
Well, one of, well, one of the things is, I mean, this is a nineteen fifty-six subdivision, and obviously, people that were building houses back in nineteen fifty-six, you know, it's not the same, same today, even though the lot is twenty-two thousand square feet. I'm actually kinda surprised that it is that big up there.
It's a very awkward lot.
Yeah, well, the rest of them, as you get down the street, are a lot smaller.
Yeah, square, yeah.
Well, they're smaller, you know? There was no, they were sixteen thousand square feet and so forth.
I think my feeling on this is if the proposal was more in line with going from the house to, you know, approximately the side footprint of the existing garage, it would be almost a no-brainer for me. But the fact that you're now going, I don't know, is that four, is that four or five feet wider on that right side? Thirty feet, twenty-two feet? So you got eight, so it's four feet on each side, assuming it was centered, but it looks like it's not quite centered, so...
Marshall, isn't my side, if it's detached, isn't it ten feet?
Correct.
I mean, if I...
It's gonna be ten feet from the principal.
Yeah, it's got, yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, when it comes right down to it, against this, the butter, if I took this garage and put it right here, it would be, it would be okay.
Right. So it's simply because it's attached?
Just because it's attached, now it's...
Considered part of the structure?
What, what did he say?
I said, I can take this thirty-foot garage and put it right here.
Detached?
Detached, ten feet from this line.
And ten feet from the house.
And ten feet from the...
Ten feet from whatever, yes.
Yeah, whatever, that's correct.
But you're not ten feet?
No.
You're nine point six eight.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, so you would need to come, you'd probably get it at that point because it's a half a foot or something like that.
Well, we wouldn't be here, we would make that ten feet.
Right.
We would get it.
Bet he'd be entitled to one, but right, but from what I heard, it dropped off in the back too, so that's...
Oh, it does?
Oh, somewhat, yeah, somewhat, I mean, it's, the back of the house is probably, it's not a walkout, but it's probably three feet lower than the front, I don't know.
So you're proposing to do that?
Well, he'd rather have it attached to his house. I mean, if we were gonna detach it, we wouldn't, obviously, we wouldn't be here.
Well, then you bring it up.
Yeah. But we're just saying that, you know, if it's against the neighbor's property, yeah, it is attached, and now it's in violation. But if it's detached, it's not in violation, and it's still as close to the property line. Twenty-eight-foot garage, make it eleven feet.
You want, you said?
Yeah.
Marshall, you got anything to say?
No, he's, you know, he's...
All right, we'll open it up to the floor. Anybody have anything on this proposal? No? Okay.
Have you spoken to the neighbor?
Yes.
I mean, they're not here, so that's...
Yeah, all the neighbors were more than fine with the addition.
Okay, call them to the floor.
And that was kind of my curiosity definitely.
Yeah.
I'd spoken to all of them.
It's not just a garage in the, in the sense of a nineteen fifties garage, whereas I could, how do you even open a car door sometimes in those things?
Right.
But...
But is it a hardship?
They're not here with torches and pitchforks either, so...
Is it, is it a hardship?
One of those things where...
I mean, I think, I think we're gonna...
The part of the hardship could be argued that it is where the, you know, the garage is, is, two-car garages weren't made, weren't, weren't a thing in the fifties. And now it's almost like standard equipment.
But Marshall said the typical two-car garage is...
Twenty-four, twenty-four.
He wants thirty.
Yeah.
That's more than...
Yeah.
A typical two-car garage.
Right, no, you're right. Still think the typical by twenty-four would be five feet.
But that, wait, there would...
That'd be fifteen point six eight feet off, I believe.
And that would be more, that would be more...
Everyone's doing math tonight.
And is that more acceptable?
By everybody a calculator.
It's a variance.
Either, either way, it's still a variance, right? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, it's still a variance.
He's spoken to the neighbor, you can still get around, it's basically almost ten feet to get around the building, I mean...
I've done a lot of work on the home just to try to increase the appearance of it since its originality in nineteen sixty. Just trying to increase the value of the home, the looks and the aesthetics of it. All the neighbors have two-car garages around me, just looking to do a small upgrade.
Keep up with the Joneses.
I mean, we really don't know what this is gonna look like, too, compared, up against the house, so...
I mean, that's the other thing, if you wanna table it, if you wanna agree to table it till next month and come back with some, you know...
Better plans or something, because we really need to see what this is gonna look like.
I need, I need to hire an architect to, I mean, that's, that was my fear and having to commit the cost.
With just a CAD drawing, you know, I mean, we're not expecting, you know, that sort of thing.
My, my fear was just having to make that investment for a couple thousand dollars and come up and get rejected again, and now I'm without what I was looking to intend to do. I mean, it would look like the front of the house with two garage doors, and a three-foot door offset to the left for a front entry.
Yeah. The way I look at it is the typical two-car garage. Where's the hardship, too? So you have to, this is not a typical two-car garage.
And the only other thing you could do is, I mean, withdraw if you wanna think about your options, if you wanna have somebody, you know, either do some plans, or you wanna consider doing something detached or something like that.
Because we, we really don't see a hardship in here, and that's, a variance is a very tricky thing with this.
Well, the hardship is the placement of the existing house back in nineteen fifty-six is, is, is the hardship, the age of the house, and as Bill said, you know, the garages that they built in nineteen fifty-six aren't quite what they, what people want today, I mean...
But he's asking for more than a typical two-car garage.
A little over-sized, get the boat in there.
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I would think you could, with, you know, a, a simple, even online program, put together something that would give us a, a better idea of what it looks like.
We'll continue the hearing till the next hearing.
You wanna continue?
Yeah.
Okay, you want, still want to continue?
Take the motion to approve the hearing, request the continue of petition, Twenty Berry, Berry Road, Abington, for a variance under one seventy-five twenty-one, for a side yard setback, forty of eleven feet at Twenty Berry Road, until the next hearing on...
Nancy, Nancy?
Second Thursday in April.
Second Thursday in April, yeah.
At seven oh five, because we already have the other people at seven.
Yeah.
The ninth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's the ninth. Second, there.
En favor, hi.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It's the last one? No, we got two more, right? Okay, two.
I'm excited.
I think I almost missed this.
All righty, Abington Zoning Board of Appeals will hear the petition of Anthony J. Pousatieri Jr. and Joan S. Pousatieri, one forty-two, Patricia Drive, Abington, naturally, for a special permit to confirm construction of detached residential garage in excess. Eight hundred and seventy-five square feet on lot one, Pousatieri Place. The property is located on assessors map twenty-one, lot eighty-four and eighty-five, in the R forty zone.
How are you guys tonight?
Great.
All right.
Shaun Riley, five hundred Washington Street, representing the Pousatieri family. Tonight with me to my far right is Tony Pousatieri, son-in-law James Kalo, and Tony's wife Joan, sitting there in the front row. This is a request for a special permit for a detached garage in excess of eight hundred and seventy-five square feet. The garage already exists.
Yeah, sorry. Nice garage.
Thank you.
The, Mr. and Mrs. Pousatieri went through the planning board and got approval to build a private road with two lots, two house lots. And if you've been down there, then you've seen the two houses. Mr. Kalo and his wife, which is the daughter of the Pousatieris, live in the house on the left, which is lot one, and that's the lot that we're talking about tonight. They already are living in the house. The house and the garage were inspected by the Avenue Building Department, constructed by Kane Construction for the Pousatieris. It was some sort of miscommunication, mix-up with the paperwork, where when Mr. Kane submitted and he got a building permit, he thought he, you know, everything was all set, so he built the house and he built the garage, and Mr. Bandit from the building department went out and inspected the house and inspected the garage throughout. Everything was fine till we got to the end, apparently, and found that there really should have been a separate building permit for the garage itself. And then looking further into it, Marshall gave him kind of a list of things that he wanted to document the file, which, it's my understanding, Mr. Kane has submitted those things, but it's not worth Marshall's time to go through all of that unless we get the special permit first approved by this board. The, so you're basically confirming what is already there, which is the garage that you've seen, but just for the record, I brought a photo of it.
Very big.
It's forty by forty, it's three bays. More important, I...
I've already seen it.
I was wondering how that got...
Yeah, that's...
I wanted to show you the inside of it.
Truss, truss roof.
The, the Kalos own the, the single-family house with an attached garage, and this is a separate garage that's intended for the storage of their, the cars that they collect.
Yeah, the vet.
Yeah, and there's, what were the other cars you're bringing in?
Chevrolet.
Seventy-eight Firebird.
Firebird.
Little smoking in the bandit.
I wanna make clear for any of the neighbors, I've talked to some of the neighbors, the Rosses, and some neighbors up back, the Millers and the Hearns, 'cause they were curious, what are we building here? Like, they thought they were building another building, but no. And they wanted to just make sure that this is not an auto body shop, or something like that. And as the picture shows you, it is nothing like that. It is, it is a shell, it's a garage, it's a flat floor, and there's no second floor to it. There's no hydraulic lift, there's no paint booth, this is where they store their, their sports cars, their collecting, collector's cars. The special permits required under section one seventy-five twenty-six B, if you recall, this was, well, back in the day, there was never a requirement for the, or a limit, a maximum to the size of a garage. And the then current building inspector, this is probably ten or fifteen years ago, suggested we should put some sort of trigger that if you have a garage that's over eight hundred and seventy-five, we can, the threshold, it should come to the zoning board to make sure that the proposed structure wouldn't end up with any sort of negative effects to the neighbors. Or no overload to water or sewer, which of course is not, 'cause there is no water or sewer, no sightline problems, no drainage problems, no issues. This, as the plans that I've submitted shows you, is at the end of the cul-de-sac. It is not going to be extended, you know, the garage itself is several hundred feet away from the road, and just, I'll give you more of an overview. That plan shows you the closed road, the two lots, and the, the...
That's all that's being built in there, correct?
Yes, just the two houses, that's all that's allowed. Oh, yeah, 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 very similar. So again, the blessing is that this was inspected throughout, so we know that there's not an issue there. But in order to issue the building permit, we, the contractor was asked to submit all the necessary documentation, the, you know, the architectials and all, and to issue a second and separate application, so we can get the second permit to be issued.
But this isn't usually how we do this.
No, it's not, and I usually am not involved in the building permit aspect, and I get a phone call, panicked phone call, that everything was just inspected, there's a problem, and then Marshall noticed, hey, this is, this should be done here, you guys gotta take care of this, you know, stop what you're doing here. I mean, the, the house is fine, it's, the family's living there. But it was completely, you know, not intentional thing, it's not something you get away with, 'cause it's, you know, a lot hiding, it's right there. It was just a paperwork stafu that they're trying to correct. In, in Marshall's defense, we're not gonna make him review everything unless this board first acknowledges it.
Well, again, it's not the way we do things, and what's the penalty for that? Tearing it down?
Have to raise it down.
Work without a permit, I suppose, I mean, I wouldn't, and double the fee, and yeah, if you don't issue a special permit, I probably would have to order it to be torn down.
That's all right.
Because it was built without a permit.
And again, this is something that Abington...
Well, accessory structure is not, you can't have, we have a house...
Yeah.
And then accessory structure, you need two separate permits, there's two frame inspectors, there's two electrical, or two everything, two foundation, two everything. My inspector was going out there, he was unaware, he saw things going, looked at it, is the stuff being done appropriately, didn't realize it, and then they came to me and they says, what?
Yeah.
And that's how this all happened, and then I spoke to them, and that's how we got the panic call, and I said...
I mean, this is nothing done on purpose, or...
Was the plans on the, was the garage on the plans?
The, the plans that he submitted had three sheets pertaining to a garage, two pertaining to a, a, a foundation that was inadequate, that didn't show a lot of stuff that was necessary. And then it had some elevations, four elev, one sheet with four elevations. There's no framing plan, there was no roof plan, there's no headers, there's nothing engineering, there was no trusses. I mean, I never would have issued a permit based on what that was there, and I didn't pay any attention to it, to be honest with you, because the application's a single-family home. And there was no mention of a garage, no, until he thought it was encompassed in a single-family permit. Well, the garage that's attached to the house is, but a detached garage is not.
Right.
Plus, he needed a special permit, so...
So I've met with Marshall twice to try to figure out, what do we, what do they do here to rectify this?
Yeah, if you could issue a special permit, he'd have it go down to Nancy, to me and his twenty-day appeal period, have it recorded, bring the necessary documentation to me, and then it's already been inspected, then we'd issue the, the final one, and everyone would be happy.
Okay.
Happy for...
We won seventy-five twenty-six B or C, which is not more than eight hundred and seventy-five feet, so that's C, right?
C.
C.
Yeah. It's C for the separate detached garage over eight hundred and seventy-five square feet.
All right, any other questions, guys, or, I mean, we've seen what it is.
Yeah, it's here.
Well, you've got Marshall's expl, you know, explained everything. You don't want him tearing it down, so I'm gonna open up to the floor, okay?
Okay.
Open it up to the floor, you want to add anything on this? Nothing? Nothing? All right, back to the, back to the table.
Part of the way I look at this is, had it gone through the proper channels, would we have allowed it?
Marshall?
And I.
Yeah, would it have been allowed?
Well, I mean, like, had they asked.
It would have come to you.
Had they asked us.
Oh, okay, excuse me.
Their special permit.
Yeah.
On, on a cul-de-sac on a lot that size. I, I think the odds are in the favor that we've got.
Over two acres is a lot, right.
Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, it's set back, it's, it's, I mean, as you make that corner and you, and you see it, I mean, you see the houses, you see the garage, but, yeah, I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I saw it, it was, there was nothing to it, really.
Yeah.
Wasn't like, oh my God, look at this thing.
Yeah, it was just the three doors, and like, well, I don't remember, I don't remember talking about that with anybody here.
Right.
But I think at the time, if they were, at the time that they were proposing or whatever to do that property, either we're planning, and it came to us. I think the odds are they probably would have had a, a special permit to put in a garage like that. You know, I think I would have had a big problem with, with that, because of what we think. So I generally don't like trying to make rulings on things when I think people tried to pull a fast one on us, so.
Could I just ask you, if you are inclined to approve this, just for the benefit of the neighbors who I talked to, if you could actually put a condition that, and it's an obvious condition, there'd be no auto body repair. We're, we have no problem with that, but I, it might help them to know that.
Auto body repair?
No auto body repair.
There's no repair, auto body repair, or anything like that going on there?
Right.
If, if, if it gets approved, you don't have to tear it down.
I'll private it. I mean.
Right. Just.
I suppose he's allowed to change his own oil.
Yeah, yeah, but we're not going to be.
Why, is there a neighbor that thinks it?
No, that was one of the questions, like, what's, you know, what's it for? And I showed him the photo.
Yeah, because it's a big building, I mean.
Yeah.
It's, it's like a huge building up there.
The question was, is there a hydraulic lift in there? Like, no. And I showed him, you know, they said, oh, okay, it's.
And there's no, there's no limit on, on garage doors in a.
No.
Public, you know, residential.
You don't have to put the condition in, but I just wanted to put that out there, that was a concern, we addressed that, showed him the same photos. Thanks.
All right.
And I think there's a scrip nozera, it's 175-26C.
Right.
Okay, so I want to make sure to put that in there. So what are you feeling?
No.
To build.
Make a motion. Petitioner Anthony J. Pousatieri Jr. and Joan S. Pousatieri, 142 Patricia Drive, Abington, for a special permit to confirm construction of detached residential garage in excess of eight hundred and seventy-five square feet on Lot 1, Pousatieri Place. Property located on Assessor's Map 21, Lot 84 and 85 in the R40 zone, be approved.
One second.
En favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Against the zoning anyhow, but you're right.
Yeah, you're right, I mean, I don't think we can make that rule.
And I just want to thank.
But Marshall, you're going to be checking out all the permits and everything, make sure everything is.
Up to go.
Up to go.
We'll do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Plus, it was Jim went through it.
Okay.
We wanted to thank, want to thank Marshall and Jim for.
Thank you.
Helping them not jump off the cliff and help, make, helping it work out, work it out. Thank you.
All right, good luck with it.
Thank you guys for your time tonight.
Take care of those cars, those are nice.
Learning a lot tonight.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Bye and see you anytime.
Take care. Can we take a little break? You guys want to take a one-minute break or two-minute break?
We're tired, we want to go home.
Huh?
We hear from seven o'clock and I'm very sick. I have to say it loud.
Yeah, I thought so.
I'm here.
One, we're going to take one minute, just one minute. You say, you're sick?
I am very sick.
Oh, no.
Not sick.
Don't cough her.
No, no.
All right, just give us one minute, okay? Just got to get the blood moving again. We're not going to take an hour, just a couple of minutes. We're not gonna take an hour, just a couple minutes.